This is the meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board on Monday, May 16th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Didich?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Metz?
Present.
Ms. Veely?
Here.
Mr. Von Aken?
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore?
I am here.
We also have with us our Board Planner, Mr. Weiser, our Board Engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our Board Attorney, Mr. Lagana.
All right, if we could stand on say pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anybody here that has something that they wish to address to the board that is not on our agenda? I hear and see no one stepping forward, so let us move on with the agenda. And we have application number 22:514, Township of Precipiny at 560 Smith Road, Block 736, Lot 9, Spot 01, courtesy review for replacement of a well.
Do I have to be sworn in?
Yes.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sean Andres, S.E.A.N.D.R.E.S., 230 Midland Ave., Pompton Lakes, New Jersey, 07442.
Mr. Andres, can you state your position with the township?
Assistant Water Superintendent for the Township.
And is the application on for this evening for a courtesy review for a replacement of a well?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So are you also going to be providing testimony?
I will.
I swear you will as well at this point. Please raise your right hand.
Great, thank you.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Please state your names, all your last for the record, and provide us with your address.
My name's Patrick Cole, last name spelled C.O.L.E. My professional address is 119 Cherry Hill Road in Precipiny, and that's the address of the regional office of my firm, H2M Architects and Engineers.
So you're a licensed architect and an engineer?
I'm a licensed engineer.
Licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. Your license is in good standing?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept Mr. Cole as a professional engineer?
I usually turn to the board and say, ask if there are any questions about the, about these gentlemen. Hearing and seeing none, I'm fine with this.
Go ahead, Mr. Andres, if you can give an overview of the project.
Sure, thank you. Again, my name is Sean Andres. I'm the Assistant Water Superintendent for the Township, and with me tonight is Pat Cole from H2M Architects and Engineers, who's our consulting engineering firm for this project. We are here this evening to provide testimony in our proposal to replace the Township's public supply well 20. The existing well 20, located at the intersection of Smith Road and Mazza Brook Road, was originally drilled in 1990. Due to deterioration of the well, significant loss in pumping capacity, and for water quality issues, we took the well out of service in early 2017. As a result, we made determination to replace the well and retain the services of a hydrogeologist to identify and assess a viable location to drill the new well. The new production well was drilled and well casing constructed in 2021. The replacement well and proposed treatment facility are located in a small parcel on Block 736, Lot 9.01, at 560 Smith Road, adjacent to the Precipiny Soccer Club property. This parcel is encumbered parkland under the NJDEP Green Acres Program. The proposed well treatment facility will house the production well, large-capacity pumps, motors, an airstripping tower, and blower for treatment of PCE, associated piping, valves, and other pertinences. It will also include an emergency natural gas generator and a gravel driveway for vehicle access. It will be operated and maintained by the Township Water Utility. Architectural elements will match neighborhood aesthetics. To date, we've obtained approval for the minor diversion of the parkland from the Green Acres Program and the State House Commission. We subsequently received approval from the Morris County Board of Chosen Freeholders Open Trust Fund Committee. Additional permitting from the New Jersey DEP Division of Water Supply and Geoscience is required, which includes a major modification of our water allocation permit, a permit to construct, and a land use permit. Estimated construction period is 18 months, once the project is designed and a public bid is issued. I'll now turn it over to Pat Cole to provide further testimony.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, board members and board professionals. I'll be providing technical ceremony, or technical testimony, that is primarily to support Sean's introductory testimony. In particular, I'm here to respond to the comments letters that were prepared in response to our original application materials, the first dated March 18th, and submitted by ARH, and the next dated April 12th, and submitted by GPI, respectively by the Board's Planner and Engineer. I can go into layers of detail with regard to the bulk land use constraints, and I'll begin by specifically addressing the ARH comments, those of the Board's Planner. So returning to the bulk land use constraints, the Township as applicant proposes no variances. So with regard to all the questions that were asked and the criteria that were checked in the original review, we can affirm that no variances are proposed. The most significant question that was raised, and I think the greatest area of ambiguity in the original application material, was the question of whether a treatment house or a so-called wellhouse is proposed. And there is one. There is one that's intended to house the proposed production well and the minor drinking water treatment equipment that will be necessary to elevate that raw water to the status of potable water. The proposed improvement is a single, a single family, or is configured as a single-family home with the visual aspect of the single-family home with planned dimensions 40 by 40. So in taking a look at the site plan as submitted, you'll observe what is essentially a small home, or something that has the appearance of a small home, that is constructed to the total minimum building size of 1,600 square feet. With regard to all the other aspects of land use as they relate to a proposed building improvement, again, everything is proposed in a conforming manner. The building height won't exceed the 35-foot maximum. All the setbacks are proposed conforming, in many cases performing in excess of the statute. With regard to parking, none is proposed. And let's see, moving further down the ARH comments letter, there were specific points requested either for further information or for affirmation. Specifically, I'm on page three of the letter. Here in the applicant's desk, confirm that no accessory structures or fencing are proposed. I can affirm both of those. There's just the principal structure, the so-called wellhouse or treatment plant. No fencing is proposed. The facility will be self-contained and secure. And with regard to the future status of observation well number one, which was installed as part of the due diligence process in hydrogeology, that is proposed to remain as part of the maintenance and upkeep with regard to water treatment and water quality at the facility. With regard to parking, again, I can affirm that none is proposed. The access driveway from the curb cut on Smith Road into the frontage of the building is proposed strictly for access, not for permanent parking. With regard to signage, none is proposed. Let me continue. The remainder of the questions on page four are slightly more qualitative in nature in that they may reference technical criteria but not specific objective metrics. With regard to wetlands, freshwater wetlands were in fact identified on the site and flagged. Our preliminary analysis through informal interaction with the Division of Regulated Land Use, the DEP, indicates that they are so-called isolated wetlands, and while isolated wetlands can in fact bear a buffer zone, their disturbance is unlikely to be regulated. We're in the process now of submitting a letter of interpretation request to the Division of Land Use Regulation to affirm that point, and our understanding essentially is that Division of Regulated Land Use will allow the construction as it's proposed, which is, again, outside those mapped wetlands. To continue, with regard to lighting, exterior lighting is proposed on the facade of the building to respond to motion detection only and intentional activation by operations personnel in the rare occasion that a nighttime visit is required. The lighting will be down-facing, hooded, and meant to minimize light pollution in this residential neighborhood. With regard to tree clearing, none is proposed, so minor tree trimming of existing mature vegetation may be necessary in order to proceed with safe construction practices. With regard to the Green Acres diversion, same has already been proposed, both to Green Acres, Division of Regulated Land Use, and to the State House Commission, and it has been affirmed as a minor diversion. The Morris County Planning Board has also reviewed that and affirmed it as proposed. To just continue, additionally, there were some qualitative questions raised about, in general, the purpose of the project as it's proposed, and those can be found on page three of the ARH comments letter. The benefits, so several, again, several points were raised. Benefits with regard to the Township's water system, this is probably before the project. The intent behind it is to reinforce and ensure the capacity, the so-called firm capacity of the potable water system, one of the essentially utility functions that the town performs, and I feel comfortable calling it a critical function. With regard to impact to wetlands, buffer, and floodplain, no impact is proposed to wetlands, no impact is proposed to floodplain, there is potential impact to buffer, and we are in the process of investigating the New Jersey DEP's posture with regard to that potential disturbance of buffer. The typical response to that, based on prior practice and experience with proposed disturbance of buffer to isolated wetlands, is often a matter of simple mitigation by planting of similar species to the potential disturbance. That being said, for anyone that's familiar with the property, the existing buffer area right now is essentially grassed. With regard to the extent of the proposed improvements and the addition or inclusion of any potential green infrastructure or green nature to the improvements that are proposed, any of the surfaces that are going to be disturbed, that are to be used for driveway or for driveway access, will be stoned rather than paved, with the intent of assisting and allowing the potential for recharge of stormwater on this property. Additionally, our firm is staffed by folks who are LEED certified and consistently integrate lead practices into the design and construction of architecture, especially that related to the superstructures that are used in drinking water treatment. It is easy to integrate those practices into that form of design because so much of it comes back to electrical use, the optimization of electrical use, and the optimization of the architectural systems that contribute to how those sorts of systems are designed and installed. So it's a bit of a qualitative answer to that question, but in all honesty, I think it rises to the intent to get to the question. I think that that closes my preliminary testimony with regard to ARH's questions, and at this time, I'd like to ask you, Mr. Weiser, if you have any other questions.
Just one other question, and it is found on page four of our report, subsection D there, where we talk about Green Acres, item number two. So you've gotten your diversion?
Correct.
Has the Township's Rossi been modified to reflect that diversion, and who's, if not, whose responsibility is it to do that, because it does come through the planning board?
So two-part answer. The answer is no. Rossi amendment has not been prepared yet, but we plan to prepare it on behalf of the Township as applicant and submit it to the body.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Actually, talking about LEED certification and things like this, this is the first time that I personally have seen a structure of this sort created for basically covering a well. And what is the process for making, keeping it to appear that it has not been abandoned, that it's being used as a home or something like that?
Oh, I see. Well, first and foremost, it'll be formatted from our architectural standpoint in terms of its superstructure. In other words, the part of this that will be a house, it will be meant by intentional design to have the appearance of a single-family home.
Right.
So we're fortunate in that the, again, relative to minor treatment processes that are necessary to make this well water potable are fairly straightforward to contain inside the three-dimensional constraints that we have available to us based on the zoning here, what we know about what we're allowed in terms of space and size for construction. With regard to maintenance and the upkeep of the facility, that'll be an aspect of the, let's say, the working life cycle of this, really what it is, is a piece of infrastructure that will be up to the municipality. And I can say, this is again qualitative testimony, but based on my own experience in reviewing the status and the condition of the existing well stations that I have visited, that that is a fair expectation. It's one that I can affirm positively and say that through my own witness, similar stations of similar status and importance are well-kept in the same way that a homeowner might be expected to keep up their own property.
Okay, so they basically look like they're being occupied as homes, or they're...
You got it. Yes, that is, that is correct. They have the physical appearance of being occupied in that way. I can tell you that for the sake of efficiency, we're investing in a piece of municipal infrastructure. We don't plan to over-design. There are no, for instance, landscape improvements that are proposed here beyond those that, you know, might be typical in a situation of this nature.
And I'm just thinking in terms of the casual eye going through, looking at a house and saying, hmm, that looks abandoned, maybe I can go in and steal something, or, you know, that kind of thing. I'm just looking at security and...
Well, with regard to, to the nature of having the appearance of occupancy, we do have a degree of experience in assisting and advising municipal operators of this nature. Often, it comes back to lighting, and if the neighbors can tolerate lights operating on a timer, it may be as simple as that in terms of achieving a basic appearance of having an occupied structure.
That's, that's all I'm asking about.
Very good.
I'm not, I'm not putting on any requirements, I'm just finding out what is a standard of practice for something like this.
That is often the only step that's necessary.
Okay. Have questions down the... Jennifer, you first.
Sure. I just wanted to confirm, the wellhouse is 40 by 40, and the height, you said is less than 35, but you don't know the exact height as of yet?
It's a maximum of 35. It's possible that it may come in slightly under that, but based on our preliminary estimates of the sizing of the treatment equipment that will be housed inside this structure, we believe that, that it will approach the 35-foot.
Okay. That's, that's what I was going to ask, if there was a reason why they're two-story. I mean, they're not actually two-story inside, right? They just appear to be two-story.
That is correct.
Because of the equipment that's inside.
Okay.
So the height has to do with all the equipment and everything that's inside?
That is exactly.
Only because I, questions will come up, they'll probably not call water, which would be the logical place, they're going to call zoning and ask us, hey, that single-family dwelling isn't, doesn't look right, what's that? So I was just curious, so it's the, it's the equipment that's inside, because otherwise you would do, the other wells, they're one-story, smaller, smaller equipment, single-story usually. Okay, that's why I was curious why it was two-story, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
There is a design intent behind it, and it's exactly that.
Okay, thank you.
Question, the rendering that we have, is the building in the wrong place versus the plan? Because I'm going off of, it looks to me like, on this one, the driveway is right next to the utility pool, but then the house is way to the, like, the driveway's on the extreme right side of the house, well, right where you're facing it, and then the plan looks very different.
I agree, based on the visualization, the rendering, so I'm sorry, I'm not entering this in as, as an exhibit, but just for the sake of informal observation, you're observing in the rendering, the driveway on the opposite side of, of the proposed structure, as is being depicted on the plan.
Well, I'm going off the utility pool too, so I think the building's moved over.
That's, that's good intuition as well.
I could imagine that this has to do with the wetlands. On that basis, how do you feel about moving the driveway to the other side of the utility pool? Seems like you have room, and I wouldn't mind getting vehicles and whatnot further away from the wetlands.
I, I can say, deferring to the utility leadership here, that we're very comfortable with that. I don't think that it will materially affect our ability to construct, operate, or maintain the site.
Yeah, and I know the soccer house next to it, I spent a lot of time there, their driveway's way further, closely, further away from this property line, so it's not a conflict.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Von Aken, you had a...
Yeah, how, how large is this structure as compared to some of your other well structures?
It's a fairly typical of, of some of them, I would say it's on the larger side because it's not only decided to house the well, it's also intended to have the equipment.
I was just wondering in terms of the outside equipment, because that would come with maintenance, you know, I have a lot of problem with algae growing on the side of my house and the roof and things like that, and just want to make sure that those were all things that the water department is comfortable taking care of.
Yes, we are, absolutely.
Very good.
I had a question on, just to follow up on the height. You mentioned someone like an airstripping tower, is that within the 35 feet as well?
It is.
And then with stormwater, it's 1,600 square feet, the town has a minor stormwater policy, and normally asks for a dry well for the, for the roof. Is, has any consideration been given to adding a dry well for the roof, or is that an issue with the recharge back in and the well, the infrastructure?
It has not been considered, but that being said, what you're seeing here is a preliminary design rendering of primarily the civil improvements, and with regard to the three-dimensional architectural rendering, again, that's a concept. So I can say that the incorporation of a dry well into the detailed design would be something that we can stipulate to.
It's in line with the, with the minor stormwater improvements for, for any type development this size.
Okay. Mr. Mealy, you had a...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the wellhouse be alarmed so as to mitigate any security issues?
Yes, it will. Like our other facilities in town, we do have intrusion alarms.
That's similar to like ADT or one of those commercial...
The majority of our stations do not. We do have two remote stations that are armed in that similar fashion. This one, I'm expecting not to, just because of the proximity to it, to our central office, and because it's not a remote location, let's say in the woods, but we, we will equip that with an intrusion alarm, so if a door opens, we are alarmed back at our office that a door has been opened.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Didich, did you have any... Any other questions by our board or our professionals?
I just had one comment. Mr. Metz raised a good point with the driveway. Again, going off the rendering, so excuse me if I'm wrong here, what's the width of the driveway? Do you have that number?
It's about 15 feet, I can tell.
You want to have that annotated? I think we debated it a couple of times.
And the only thing, the only point I want to get to is if you're going to move the driveway more to the north, does it allow you the ability to put a turnaround area so any maintenance vehicles can do a performance K-turn on-site and then exit onto Smith Road facing forward and not have to back out onto Smith Road?
Okay, I'll answer one at a time. So driveway width as proposed is 15 feet. Overall proposed length as it's laid out now is 58 feet. With regard to disturbance, I will have to revisit the terms of our diversion.
Okay.
To ensure that, so from a conceptual standpoint, what you're proposing is quite possible. It's easy to execute, and so the short answer is yes, with the caveat that I have to revisit the terms of our prior approvals to make sure that we can fully agree to that.
That's fine, just a, just a comment. I have not to follow up with the chairman.
All right. Stuart.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. In closing out my testimony, I should have made it affirmative comment, and it is in our report that this project is consistent with the Township's master plan, so.
Very good. All right. I don't have any members of the public here to ask you questions at this point in time. If you want to get on with the engineering part, or has that been...
It's been satisfied in the testimony.
All right. Is there anything further that you wish to present?
No, thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
Is this your case? Everything? Any, any thoughts or comments or questions by members of the board or our professionals? Hearing and seeing none. There since, again, since there are no members of the public here to make any comments, I close the evidentiary portion of this case at this time. Since you have no, nothing further to add, is there any member of the board that wishes to move a motion suggesting that we find that this is indeed consistent with our master plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we find this application or this presentate, this courtesy review, consistent with our master plan, along with the recommendations from the board of moving the driveway as far away from the wetlands as possible and adding dry wells to compensate for the extra impervious coverage of the house or the structure. Calling it a house is appropriate.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second, Veely.
Nora, would you call the vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Didich?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Veely?
Yes.
Mr. Von Aken?
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Yes. Very good. Now, moving on on the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have application number 22:518, Township of Precipiny, Troy Road, Block 734, Lot 2.06, courtesy review for replacement of a well.
Good evening, board.
Please raise your hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Name for the record, and please provide your professional address.
My name is John Weirka, I'm the Water Superintendent. My address is 15 Kokora Avenue, Lot 10, New Jersey.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Rachel. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Name and professional address for the record, please.
Dave Chanda, I'm a project manager and water system consulting engineer. I'm with Suburban Consulting Engineers, and I'm representing the well 20 R case with John Orca.
Could you please by your last name, sir?
Chanda, C.H.A., N as in Nancy, D as in David, A as in Apple.
Thank you very much. All right. Tell us what you've got.
Okay, I'm here to, I'm here to talk about well, proposed well 21R. Well 21 is an existing public community well permitted by the DEP in 1992. The well is 30 years old. The existing well has deteriorated in capacity and is in need of treatment for emergent dependence regulated by the New Jersey DEP. The well can no longer pump at its permitted capacity. Rehabilitation has been very limited. Improvements are very short-lived. It was determined that a replacement well within 30 feet of the existing well would bring the well back to its permitted capacity. would bring the well back to its permitted capacity and meet today's safety and performance standards. The proposed well twenty-one R, production well has already been drilled and needs a building and a treatment plant capable of serving the water that comes from this well. The existing building shall remain. There is a building on site. And we'll be building a second building for the treatment. Well twenty-one R will add a new building comprising of advanced oxidation ultraviolet treatment, activated carbon treatment vessels, electrical improvements, site piping, coronation and disinfection. We will also have electric gas and sewer utilities coming from Troy Road and Springfield Court. We're, we're in the process of obtaining all our land use permits as well as our construction permit in the New Jersey DPD. We are proposing that no trees have to be removed. There will be an emergency gas power generator to maintain the facility in the event of a power outage. Like the previous well, the estimate duration is believed to be about eighteen months. However, supply chain material issues are unknown. And our project completion date is approximately December of twenty twenty-three. The anticipated vehicle traffic will be limited mostly during the construction phase. This ultimately is an uninhabited facility, but is checked daily. I will have our consultant, Dave Chanda, address the environmental constraints and the project details as well as any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. So we have two pieces of formal correspondence from GPI and ARH Associates. I'd like to go through each of those formal comments through each letter report. And hopefully by the time we're through all, we've addressed the board's concerns. So starting with the ARH letter document, we have on page two, two comments I'd like to bring light to. The plan is not signed. That was a preliminary rendering. We have since furthered that along. There are signed and sealed drawings of the building and some of the site improvements. As part of the courtesy package, we wanted to make sure that we got that to John as soon as possible so we could talk and discuss today. Confirm that no wellhouse or other buildings are being proposed. That is correct. It's only the thirty-two by thirty-eight, eleven hundred and twenty square foot building that you did see on that package that's being proposed for construction along with an outdoor generator. That second building is going to house the new series of treatment. However, we will modify certain appearances inside the existing well facility. So nothing additional past what was shown, the drawings that that was submitted. On page three, a discussion and a comment point regarding the buffer associated with the wetlands. There is a hundred and fifty-foot transition area surrounding the nearby environmental, instance, the Troy Brook and the pond nearby. That encompasses the entire site. The entire site is encompassed by the transition area. We actually have gone and received a transition area waiver for the first phase of this project, which at the time was just the outdoor generator. Since then, we start to evolve the project as we learn some additional treatment concerns may be needed for what's called the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, UCMR five, specific with one four dioxin. So at this point, John, Sean, the water department, myself, kind of conferred that the best tact was to proactively address these compounds. So with that decision, we had to obviously go with a new building. Again, the building that was shown to you in the courtesy review package. So with that transition area waiver approval, we actually are in the midst of going right back out to the division of land use. That's actually anticipated to go out this week. Taking the approval we received and setting in a modified plan set with our environmental specialist, Doug Chabrack, showing the new building improvements. It's anticipated there will be no further issues from the DPD, being that we already kind of proved compliance with their regulations the first go around. The majority of these improvements are anticipated to be taken place on the gravel drive, almost kind of acts as a peninsula. So the waiver we received was basically going for previously disturbed areas. So so long as we avoid any disturbance to grass or any of the transition area, we'll maintain the consistency of that prior approval we have received already. So again, that will be going out shortly. So that should justify the buffer associated with the site. Also on page three, there was a question on lighting. At this point, the only lighting we're proposing is over any entrance and degress points of the building. So there will be a garage-style roll-up door for some of the large equipment. That will have an overhead enclosure as, and as far as the manway doors, same thing. An overhead light on those, just the utility department could see their way in and out. Page four, trees John mentioned.
Would, would these be motion detector lights? Would they be on all the time? Would they be?
We have the, this is again, concept. It's only just gone to the DPD. We can make those changes. So if motion detecting is something you feel comfortable with, John, we could go that route.
Yes, it is. We can put motion detectors.
You know, it's not in, in a community, but it's not too far from residential. And I can see in the winter that the lighting.
When the trees are down. Yeah, absolutely. So we can make a motion detector, especially being that you'd be off-site a bit.
Are there any? The board seem happy with that?
Yes.
Okay.
No problem.
Just as long as bears can trigger them as well as humans.
Yeah. That's possible. On page four, we talked about trees. John mentioned there will be no trees to be removed. That'd be a hard stance. But again, we're fortunate enough that the track of the improvements are already on the gravel driveway. So that's going to be what we hold true to. And then finally on page five, there were three high-level technical comments that I could touch on. Benefits to the water system. And this may satiate some additional technical concerns by the board. Again, that first package we submitted was just the generator. We made the decision to move forward with a larger treatment building to house this expanded treatment concept for one four dioxin. What this also gives the water department is some latitude for the future of any other emerging compounds, which are fast and kind of furious at this point. With one of the more important yielders of water we have out here at fourteen hundred gallons a minute, I think the long-term sustainability of this plant is key. So having this secondary plant, which will be housing specifically carbon vessels to quench in a technical sense the leftover hydrogen peroxide from our advanced oxidation stage, can actually possibly be retrofitted to attack other contaminants. So we see this as a multifaceted benefit to the water department, this expansion. Impacts to the wetlands, zero. Again, maintaining all previously disturbed areas on their site is the objective and actually the condition of our approval we have to maintain. And then green infrastructure. I can actually, I do not have at this point in the design too much on green infrastructure. So if there's anything the board would like to bring up, I would be willing to hear. But right now, there is not too much proposed in that track.
Not your testimony at this time?
For the ARH comments, yes.
Okay.
Two questions. On the bottom of page three of our report, there's two footnotes that are questions. Can you confirm that other than the house or the structure you talked about, there's no access, additional accessory structure?
Yes, that's confirmed.
Okay. And any signage?
No.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, all of our questions have been answered and we don't have any concerns. And we can again say that this project would be consistent with the township's master.
All right. Any questions by members of the board on the ARH? Ms. Veely, you have a.
I just wanted to get the numbers again. You said third, the treatment building is thirty-two by thirty-eight?
That's correct.
Do you have a height yet?
Twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight feet.
So under the thirty-five foot use.
Perfect.
Anybody else? Okay, just one quick question. The generator, I see that it's gas-powered?
Yes.
So there's no fuel stored onsite?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess the entirety of this new building seems to be within the area that's already, was it crushed gravel or anything?
It's crushed gravel, yeah.
So it's already more or less kind of impervious?
Correct. That's true. Yep.
At least under ordinance it is.
Well, if that's.
Okay. All right. You wanted to address the engineering report now?
Yes. On the engineering report, there were four technical comments. I'd like to start with site operations. You won't see much different than what's happening today between the water department, technical staff, and managers. The only difference is there will be additional treatment equipment. So you may time to time have, you know, John's working vehicles coming in and out a little bit more frequently than there are today. However, again, no severe impacts to site traffic. The operations again onsite would be more housed inside that building. So, you know, they'd be working on process piping. Any types of media exchange would happen between, you know, tanker trucks, things like that. It would be very minimally invasive. And again, that, that would be probably the only difference to what you see today on the well facility building that's there, is that second room for carbon vessels. Is that good? Installation date and duration of construction, John touched on that. I, I would agree. December twenty twenty-three would be the goal for the facility being placed in substantial use. And then finally, environmental constraints. I do believe we have touched on that a bit. But I would be open for further technical testimony, should the board wish.
Mr. Canjiano.
No, no further testimony. You guys got the lucky, were luckier than the others because you did not have a green acre diversion to deal with.
Correct.
So that's, and kudos to the other team with that. That is, that is a massive undertaking, the, the green acres diversion. Now, this is in a residential zone. What kind of soil movement, truck traffic do you anticipate going through the residential streets? Duration or, or whatnot?
During active construction, it will be a decent amount of large triaxle, large, large vehicles. There's not too much earth movement. However, you do need, this will likely be a block building to keep the same facade the water department has on the other wells. So you're going to be moving a lot of materials in and out. There will be to get the carbon vessels in onsite. Likely a large flatbed is going to have to get back in there. But nothing more invasive than what they've had out onsite when they drilled the new well. You know, they'd have to have large equipment with, you know, cranes, picks, that type of equipment. During active construction, there will be an impact trap around that area.
And largely built at grade, so not a lot of trucking of soil.
That is correct. There is no grading proposed.
That's all I have. Chairman.
All right. I assume that you'll stick with all the rules with regard to the lighting. But, you know, the residential area, you don't want the bright lights that are going into people's bedrooms or anything like that at any time of year. So not only would you have the bare sensitive lights, but if they go on in the middle of the night, people know there's something going on out there. But you want to make sure that it doesn't go past the property line, that kind of thing.
Okay. We have not done a formal foot candle calc on that, but we will have a lighting plan in final bid, construction set again, with where we're at in the design process. We're past concept. We're actually with the DPD for the Bureau of Permits to Construct.
I'm sure you'll work with the engineer on making sure that it's.
Yes.
Acceptable. So they'd be working with the town professionals as town professionals.
Yes.
Making sure the residents are not inappropriately disturbed.
We'll conform with the, the site use.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, welcome to our.
Thanks for having me.
Hey, John. So, Mr. Mealy, you have any questions?
Yes, the same question that I had for the previous application. Alarms, motion detectors, anything to prevent security lapses?
Yes.
For this facility, we are going to put in a security system. It is rather remote. So I think it would be appropriate to have similar to an ADP type of system.
Yes.
In place. Sean also mentioned that we will have the capability of monitors back at our headquarters.
Yep.
Our headquarters is staffed twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And through our SCADA system, we need to see any intrusion.
Right.
And then we'd call off alarms internally. But we will also have an outside source.
Good. Thank you. Yes. Very good.
Other questions by members of the board on this testimony? Mr. Didich?
Yeah, real quick. So what kind of traffic we are expecting? Like fifty trucks over a period of month or?
Yeah, over, over probably two to three months. It'd be when you're constructing and erecting the building. It'd be the most traffic you see. The rest would be local to the building. Again, process piping, fittings, valves. It'd be that actual, the building itself. But again, that'd be very cute in the, in the terms of the construction schedule.
Okay.
A lot of this work will happen inside once it's built.
Yep. Thank you.
Other members of the board have questions on this testimony at this time? There are no members of the public here to ask questions of this testimony at this time. Do you have anything further you wish to present to us or say?
Therefore, that would conclude our testimony.
Okay. Any comments by any of the members or by any of the professionals on this? All right. Seeing no public here to make any comments. I'm going to close the evidentiary portion of the case. And I'm going to ask if there's some member of the board, unless there's some comments from the professionals at this point. I'm going to ask if there are any members of the board who feel comfortable moving a motion finding that this is consistent with the master plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mealy.
A motion to approve application number twenty-two colon five eighteen Township of Parsippany Troy Road, block seven thirty-four, lot two point zero six, courtesy review for replacement of a well.
So you're finding that your motion finds it consistent with our master plan?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second, Meth.
All right. Ms. Jolie, if you could call the vote, please.
Mr. Didich?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Math?
Yes.
Ms. Veely?
Yes.
Mr. Von Aken?
Yes.
Chairman Dimm's more.
Yes. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hope the water tower is doing well. They've got the tower up now. And it is, as you said, blocking some of the parking, but, and the flow through, but it's very good. All right. Is there anything else that needs to come before this board at this time?
No, there is not.
No, there is not. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second? Anybody in opposition, just stay here and we'll let this go. Right? So.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night. Good night.